...safe drug disposal program. I'd like to note that there were some minor changes to the PowerPoint slides after they were posted, so I believe hard copies have been provided to the board and are also located at the back of the room. With me are Susan Klein Rothschild, Deputy Director over Community Health, and Larry Fay, the Environmental Health Director in the Department of Public Health. I'd also like to thank the Public Works Department, in particular Leslie Robinson, as well as the Sheriff's Department Lieutenant McVeigh, County Council Susan McKinsey, and Erin Weber from District Office Three, who all worked with us on this issue. Unused medications are a significant problem in the community. There are many, many households with medications that are expired. Sometimes a physician will change a medication, leaving the prior medication unused. Sometimes loved ones unfortunately pass away, leaving behind a number of medications in the medicine cabinet and in the household. And it's a very difficult challenge to appropriately dispose of these medications. Sometimes they're thrown away, they're washed down a sink, or they're flushed down a toilet. These things can have environmental impacts. Sometimes the more powerful medications or narcotics can be diverted or abused. And so with me again are Susan Klein Rothschild and Larry Fay to discuss the history, some of the process in getting to this point, as well as our proposed model for a safe drug disposal program. So I'll turn it now over to Susan.
Thank you, members of the Board. I just want to briefly review the history of how we got to where we are. This Board, in May of 2015, received a report about some of the concerns about unused medication. And there were a number of impacts, both to people in the community as well as to the environment, that were of a concern. Based upon that meeting, the Board directed our department to get input from stakeholders. We held meetings in North and Central and South County. We reached out to many community groups. There were different views, different inputs, but different perspectives, but there was consensus on one element. All entities said, "We need a sustainable program here in Santa Barbara County." Based on that, we came back to your Board in October. We provided the information about the stakeholders, and the Board directed us to draft an extended producer responsibility stewardship ordinance. And that's what we're bringing to today. In January, prior to bringing this ordinance, we did hold public meetings and asked for input again from our community about the concepts to include in this ordinance. The ordinance that we've brought to you today has been drafted based upon San Mateo County with considerable input from our own county council. Thus, Larry will take you through the process and the ordinance we've brought.
Thank you, Susan. Chairman Adam, members of the Board. I wanted to take just a few minutes to go over some of the key points of the ordinance, not to spend a lot of time going into the real nuts and bolts in detail. There are really kind of four key elements, key provisions, one of which, the ordinance that we've drafted it does apply countywide. And the ordinance covers all producers of covered drugs that are selling product here in Santa Barbara County to residents of the county. All producers of covered drugs are required to participate in a stewardship plan, a stewardship plan that addresses how they are going to manage the unused unwanted drugs that have gone out to the consumers and now need to be recovered and returned and destroyed. A stewardship plan can be developed by a single producer to cover his or her products. A stewardship plan can be developed by a group of producers to cover the products of that group, or a stewardship plan can be developed by a third party, and then producers can opt to participate under that independent or third-party stewardship plan. Producers will bear the cost of the implementation of the stewardship plan, and that includes all the costs associated with the plans, the installation and servicing of collection bins that would be in the various collection sites, pharmacies, law enforcement. They would cover the cost of an education and outreach program for the general public to advise them how to return the unwanted meds, and also have materials that are universally used and displayed at the various collection sites.
Mr. Fay?
Sir?
Do you really think that they're just gonna -- they're not gonna charge extra for the meds for that?
Supervisor Adam, of course, the cost of collection will be rolled into the cost of the product. What they cannot do in our ordinance is identify a specific collection surcharge like you see on some of these environmental -- yeah, they're not gonna do this for free, I'm sure of that.
Right, right. So, but I hate it when people say, "Well, they're gonna bear the cost." Well, they're not, 'cause the consumers are gonna bear the cost.
Supervisor Adam, understood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Included in the stewardship plans are also provisions for special events to cover areas that might not have convenient sites for collection bins, and in addition, there would be the ability to offer mail-back services for those communities that aren't otherwise covered, or for some of the more -- some of the products that maybe have a really limited distribution. Then finally, there is oversight by the county to assure that the -- one, to review the plans and make sure they've met the requirements for complete plan submission, and then some oversight to assure that the plans are being implemented as approved.
Mr. Fay? Supervisor Labanino?
Do we know how many producers there are countywide?
Supervisor Labanino to the Chair. One of the first tasks we adopt this is to build the list of producers that are selling in the county. My guess in looking at what we're seeing in the other counties is we're talking hundreds, maybe not thousands, but certainly many hundreds.
Thank you.
So, want to talk a little bit about participation in the plans. As we've already said, the producers are required to prepare and submit the plan, and the producers are participating in a plan that has been submitted and approved. They are required to implement the program, and as we said, they pay for the cost of implementing the program, although those costs come from the revenues they receive for the sale of the product. Pharmacies can participate. The goal is to get participation from pharmacies, to have collection bins located where they are convenient to the consumers that are buying the drugs. The pharmacies would also post the education materials to -- whether they have a collection site or not, post education materials that help direct the public as to where -- what to do with the drugs and where to take them. And for pharmacies, participation is voluntary. It's really up to the stewardship plan to figure out a way to recruit pharmacies to participate. Law enforcement agencies are also not required to participate, but they may participate. And one element of the plan is to do extension to all the law agencies and law enforcement agencies in the county to offer them the opportunity to host a bin. So, things like our Operations Medicine Cabinet could continue.
Supervisor Labanino?
Sorry. I want to do one per slide, I guess. But mine kind of goes back to the question, the statement you made that the manufacturer cannot add on the cost as a line item. Why can't they do that? I mean, we see other items like a TV or tires, they have disposal fee on there. Why can't we just do that with a drug?
Supervisor Labanino through the Chair. I would say that's an option. It's not one that we chose in the ordinance here. It's not one that has been adopted in the ordinances that we modeled ours from. I would -- I'm not sure that I would want to speculate on the pros and cons one way or another.
Okay. But it's not illegal, or I mean, it's something we could do if we wanted to.
Supervisor Labanino through the Chair. We never really addressed that question in the ordinance, but I think we probably could if we chose to go that way.
All right. I just thought you said they couldn't do it, so I didn't know. Okay.
Well, they're gonna just charge extra. You won't be able to tell.
Well, I know. And I'm okay with that, because to me, it's -- and we can get into this later, but to me, well, we'll get into that later.
Okay.
Let's talk a little bit about how this works. It's not complicated from a consumer standpoint. We'll take the kiosk example. Kiosk is placed at one of the participating pharmacies. The consumer, maybe they're going in to fill a prescription, maybe they're going in for something else, they can drop off the unused meds into that bin. The bin is secured, it's in an area that can be observed by the pharmacist. The pharmacy role is in providing the space and management of the bin, and the pharmacy staff actually are the ones to empty the bin when it's full and replace it with the shipping containers. They pull the container, it's generally a double sealed container, seal the inner container, close the outer container, put a shipping label on it, and arrange for shipping to the in-site where the product is either incinerated, or as we may learn about later today, destroyed in another high-temperature process that's recently been permitted here in California. The --
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we've heard that when our sheriff does it, they have to take the pharmaceuticals out of the bin, and then they drive it down to wherever, somewhere down south. But they could be doing this as well, or does it have to be a pharmacist who, by license, is the only one who could do that?
Supervisor Wolf through the Chair. Under the stewardship plan, the law enforcement would participate in the same manner as the pharmacy and be able to host the bin, and we would not be in the role any longer of having to transport ourselves. We could do the same kind of packing and shipping, or arrange for a shipper to pick it up.
But they -- so does that mean they could do it now, even if we're not in this steward program?
Supervisor Wolf through the Chair. I don't, I think right now, we are, the Sheriff's Department's handling it as, it's more in that world of controlled substances and absent the --
We need the ordinance? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
We need something, okay. All right, thank you.
As far as timeline, we envision about a 12-month time period to actually get into implementation. As I indicated earlier, upon adoption of the ordinance, if the Board supervises, adopts it, we would have a six-month window, which is really developing the program, identifying the producers that are in the county, and getting the commitment from all of the producers, their notice of intent to participate in a stewardship plan. During the period between the notice of intent to participate and the actual submission of a plan, the developer of the stewardship plan will be doing outreach to all of the pharmacies, law enforcement agencies, to identify the sites that will host a bin as part of the plan, and then ultimately submit that plan to us within 12 months of the adoption of the ordinance. We would have 90 days to review the plan, either approve it or reject it, and suggest or recommend amendments to that plan, and then another 90-day approval for resubmission. And then, once the plan has been adopted, there's a three-month period for the stewardship organization or the producers to actually put the plan into implementation. At 18 months, a report to the county summarizing where we are, which is really kind of a kickoff sort of report, and then annual reports thereafter. There is a 24-month requirement, and by annual requirement after that 24 months to do assessment surveys of the community and to post results, so that it's available to the general public. And every three years, a review of the plan, a resubmission, or plan amendments as necessary, submitted to the county for review. I think it's kind of important to note that while this is kind of cutting-edge stuff, we're not the ones that are actually blazing the trail. Alameda County, Seattle King County really carried the heavy load on this. They were the first two in the western part of the country to adopt these pharmaceutical EPR ordinances, and went through the various legal challenges. Over the last 18 months, San Francisco, San Mateo, Santa Clara County, Marin County, and Santa Cruz County have all adopted ordinances very much like the one that we have presented. My understanding is Los Angeles County will be conducting a hearing this time next week on their draft ordinance, that again, is very much like what we have presented to the Board.
In response to late input on the proposed ordinance, which was discussed with County Council, we are recommending one very minor edit to the proposed ordinance language, and this edit is documented here. It's in Section 18C, 16, parentheses A, and that is to add the words lawful in two places, lawful before the word incentive, and then lawful again before the word payment. And that's the only edit that we would suggest. And this concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Having no lights, let's go to public comment. How many speakers do we have?
Fourteen.
Okay, let's do two minutes.
Fourteen requests. We're gonna start in Santa Maria with Ed Weaver, to be followed by Linda Paxton.
Thank you, everybody. Edwin Weaver with Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. I just want to tell you a story about Shelley. Shelley's mom slipped and fell and broke her leg, and was prescribed OxyContin. She took one of them, and they made her nauseous, so she put the drugs back in the medicine cabinet and forgot all about them until Shelley turned 13, and started taking them herself. That was Shelley's beginning of her opioid addiction. Time and time again, our kids are getting a handle on and getting a hold of prescription drugs throughout this country, because there's no safe way to dispose of these medications. You can't flush them down the toilet, or it ruins our water. You can't throw them in the dump, or it ruins our water. We know that. And so we have to come up with a strategic plan, and I can't think of anyone better than the people who overproduce, overprescribe this medication to fund the efforts to dispose of them properly. It shouldn't be your, you shouldn't have to pay for it, I shouldn't have to pay for it, but the pharmaceutical companies should. I understand your concern that they'll pass it on to the consumer, but then maybe it'll be, help people become more aware of this problem, and also, more importantly, get the drugs out of the medicine cabinets, out of places where they're disposed of improperly, and back into the incinerator where they belong, and hopefully not overprescribed as they have been. Thank you very much.
Linda Paxton, to be followed by Gina Cortez.
Good afternoon and thank you. I represent the Council, area on aging, and want to, we sent a letter, but we also wanted you to know how important this is. And as far as the management of it, hazardous waste has a cradle-to-grave responsibility to the producer. And this has been a long time coming. Our water supplies have been contaminated by prescription drugs that did not belong there, were flushed down the toilet. So this is an exciting thing for me to see it come to fruition, and I urge this passing. Thank you.
Gina Cortez? That's our next speaker, to be followed by Donette Smith. Is Gina there in Santa Maria? There we go.
Hello, Gina Cortez with Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. Hi, I work with teens and families in our community. Information that I'm receiving is that they are getting prescription drugs from their medicine cabinets in their homes, from relatives, or grandparents, or uncles, or aunts, and from their peers, from their friends. The youth state that they're, that they use prescription drugs to get high because of their easy access, they're able to get them very easily. More than 1,600 teens begin abusing prescription drugs every day. After marijuana and alcohol, the most commonly abused drug is prescription drugs. I urge you to approve this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Donette Smith in Santa Maria, then we're gonna come back to Santa Barbara for J. John Combs.
Hi, I'm here today in support of this ordinance. According to the 2014 National Institute on Drug Abuse Study, more than 1,600 teens start abusing prescription drugs every day. Providing collection bins is critical for the public health and safety of our youth in our community, and will help reduce the opportunities for abuse by our teens. Although alcohol and marijuana are still the most commonly used drugs amongst our youth in our community, prescription drug abuse is becoming more prevalent because it is easy to access. Approving this ordinance will help keep prescription drugs out of the hands of our youth. Thank you.
Back in Santa Barbara with J. John Combs, to be followed by Reese Isbell.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is John Combs. I'm the CEO and President of SEER Corporation. I am here today to support the approval of the ordinance and introduce a real and proven solution to the very real and worsening problem that is the target of the ordinance. Just recently, in the Seattle Times, there appeared an article publishing the results of a two-year study. An alphabet soup of drugs were found in the Puget Sound and in the tissue of young salmon, from Tylenol, Ibuprofen, Advil, and Aleve, to Lipitor, Prozac, Zoloft, and OxyContin. It was described as a cocktail of 81 drugs and personal care products. While public education on this issue is helpful, it is not enough. Further, an ordinance is most effective when it can be efficiently and cost-effectively implemented and enforced. We think we can help in this regard, particularly the disposal portion of the ordinance. SEER and its Los Angeles-based partner, Medical Waste Services, or MWS, have been in the environmental business for over four decades. For the last six years, we have been operating a regulated medical, regulated medical waste treatment facility in LA County. Until recently, MWS, just like all of its competitors, had to ship or transport all of the regulated medical waste and pharma to Maryland or Texas for incineration. Recognizing this problem as an opportunity, SEER and MWS have invested heavily to develop, patent, and permit an alternative to incineration, the Corona Luxe Waste Destruction Technology. This technology has been safely and successfully operating in Los Angeles County for over a year. California pharma waste now no longer needs to be shipped out of state, thereby eliminating the dilemma of having to export our problem. The process combines two proven technologies, pyrolytic destruction and low-energy plasma, originally studied by the EPA for minimizing air pollutants. Rather than consume energy to destroy solid waste, we use the BTU value in the waste itself and turn it to smoke. We then destroy the smoke. We believe this disruptive technology will become the gold standard in the industry. This process is cleaner than a boiler, a single car, a furnace, and certainly an incinerator. The Corona Luxe reduces environmental risk by minimizing or completely eliminating transportation, incineration, and all associated --
I'm sorry, your time is up.
The ordinance is needed?
I'm sorry, your --
I have a question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. But it's funny how --
I didn't have a timer, I apologize.
It's right there.
It didn't start, I don't think it started.
Oh, okay. So, do you get product mailed to you?
That's what we're implementing in Los Angeles County.
Okay. So do, if I want to mail something to you, and I have a box of pills or whatever, and I'm a pharmacy, do I have to mail it in anything particular? I mean, does it have to go in a medical waste? How's it shipped to you?
It's an ordinary mailing envelope. Los Angeles County is proposing it be distributed at the point of purchase, so when we go to receive our pharmaceuticals, I receive the envelope. I can go home and use it if and when needed.
Very cool, thank you.
Thank you very much, members.
Reese Isbell? To be followed by Mary Conway.
My name is Reese Isbell. I'm here on behalf of the California Life Sciences Association. We submitted a letter in the packet as well. First of all, I do want to say thank you to the county staff and directors who have been very helpful in back-and-forth conversations and information gathering. California Life Sciences Association is the leading voice of the life sciences sector and serves over 750 biotech, pharmaceutical, medical device, and diagnostic companies. I do think it's important that we do recognize the importance of the innovation that we've gotten through the new drugs, new abilities for people to live longer, and not forget that as we're talking about disposal. The stated goals of preventing the abuse of medicine from the environment are laudable, but there is no science that actually suggests takeback is a better option than disposal in household waste. In fact, the FDA and DEA recommend, in numerous cases, household disposal. Additionally, it will be difficult to administer, and as you mentioned, related to the costs, in all other environmental recycling programs that are out there, bottles, batteries, electronics, there is a user fee that the consumer pays. In this instance, it's a situation where they're not allowing that user fee, so the onus really is completely on the industry, and it is not part of the shared responsibility with the consumer. I would also say that the majority of what is found in the waterways is through excretion. It is not necessarily through the dumping of pills into the toilet. It is mostly through our own human body waste as it goes through our system. I'm running out of time, but that's basically what I wanted to address, and happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Go ahead. Thank you. So, you do say that at home, it's better to get rid of it at home, and I --
Correct.
I read your letter, and it says that you recommend that consumers put unwanted medications into a sealable plastic bag, add kitty litter, sawdust, or coffee grounds to the bag, crush the pills in the bag, and then add, or add water to dissolve before placing the sealed bag in the household trash. Do you know if anybody's ever done that?
People do it all the time.
Do they?
Of course. It's actually on the website for the FDA and DEA as a recommended option. It's what most people are told when they do ask their pharmacy or other places what to do. That is the preferred method for household disposal. It is what people can do, and it, part of what we're trying to do, and in LA for next week, as was mentioned, is to promote more education opportunities for just such an option.
Well, you put your batteries in a, in a plastic bag and put them on top of your recycled bin, right?
Not most people. Most people chuck it into an empty lot in Santa Maria, so that's the problem.
All right. I found your letter very compelling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Conway, to be followed by Rick Clausen.
Good afternoon, Chairman Adam and distinguished supervisors. I am Mary Conway, and I'm the Coalition Director for the San Onofre Valley Youth Coalition. And for about the past 10 years, we have been about reducing and preventing youth substance abuse along with our county partners. We all know that we're in the midst of epidemic, opiate epidemic in our country. Our U.S. consumes more than 80% of the painkillers worldwide. Here in our county, we're losing young lives to this powerful addiction, so much is that we're faced now to supply opiate and agonist products such as naloxone to reduce those overdose deaths. Prevention is a much safer and wiser platform to operate from. The Sustainable Producer Responsibility Ordinance to limit access to these drugs is a step in the right direction. According to the latest National Survey on Drug Use and Health, among people age 12 and older reporting abusing pain relievers within the past year, 56% got those pain relievers from friends and family, only 18% from one doctor, and about 4% from drug dealers. Our own county youth report that the ease of access to these drugs is a big part of why they're starting to abuse prescription meds. It's so important, therefore, that we properly dispose of these drugs and not leave these accessible to our youth. Excuse me. I thank you Supervisor Farr for bringing this ordinance forward, and I urge you to please consider implementing this ordinance to provide more access to safe disposal of the RX drugs, and for the education component that's necessary for our community members and families. We must really all work together to protect our youth from youth substance abuse. Thank you.
Rick Clausen, to be followed by Chris Burtness.
Thanks very much. My name is Rick Clausen. I'm a retired clinical pharmacist with over 40 years of experience at the university, the medical center, and the community hospital levels. I'm therefore very familiar with the dilemma of safe drug disposal, although mostly from the institutional perspective, it's an even bigger and a more important issue for the community. Now, I've participated in the Public Health Department's community outreach forums, and I believe that the need is there. I've heard the background and the plans. I think that the plans that are presented are workable, and I think that there are other models also presented that suggest success with this kind of a program. I support the passage of the proposed ordinance, and I hope to participate in it as a member of the public. I will say, in response to earlier comments, that I think that when drug residue is found in the environment, if it's identified as the parent drug, it's probably not from human excretion, that the human body is going to metabolize and other ways change those drugs. And so if you have found drugs in the environment -- And so, if you have found drugs in the environment that are the parent drug, it's because they've been disposed of incorrectly. And I would say that the kitty litter issue deals with abuse and prevents misuse by people who happen on those drugs. It doesn't deal with the environmental issues. Kitty litter is still the parent drug. It's a dissolved tablet or capsule. It goes into the environment, it goes into the water, into the soil. Thank you.
Chris Bertness, to be followed by John Doyle.
These are drugs that are very important that cancer survivors, very important drugs, but they're dangerous. Don't need them right now. I'm Christine Bertness with the Alcohol Adder Drugs Advisory Board. Thank you Supervisor Farr for bringing this ordinance forward. ADP has unanimously supported these efforts right from the start and will continue to do so. We've co-sponsored many community forums dealing with the problem over the years and written letters to the board of supervisors in support. Obviously, this is not an easy task, but please do not back away. The repercussions of doing so poses serious consequences, as we are currently seeing. The amount of dangerous drugs sitting around homes is staggering. People need a convenient way, convenient way to dispose of drugs, or they'll end up in the trash or in the wrong hands. Let's don't vilify the big pharmacies, as the medications are life-saving and necessary. But the same caution of safe packaging and distributing on the front end of the product just doesn't follow the product to the end in a proper disposal. We must educate the public to properly dispose of these products, but the disposal must be very convenient and not cost the consumer, or the proper disposal won't happen. If we can't effectively, we cannot effectively do this by putting a few drop bins at our local police stations. They don't have the time, nor should this be their responsibility. If enough communities demand the responsible takeback of unused drugs, they will get together and they'll solve the problem of their products' life's end together, in a common-sense manner that serves the people, sort of like recycling in reverse. The producers should not let the good of their products be overshadowed by the damage that's being done to our youth, people in general, and our environment with casual disposal methods. Please support an easy, convenient, managed, take-back system. Thank you.
John Doyle. To be followed by James Joyce.
Hello, Chair Adams, Supervisors. I'm John Doyle. I'm the Program Administrator for the County Department of Behavioral Wellness, and on behalf of our department, we support the passage of this ordinance. Many of our behavioral wellness clients experience med changes. It happens all the time, and as a result, behavioral wellness clients end up with a lot of powerful psychotropic medications in their possession, and they don't have enough avenues to dispose of them. The community resources for the appropriate disposal of medications continues to diminish, while the cost associated with disposal continues to rise. Behavioral Wellness has initiated a pilot drug disposal program purchased. We have purchased disposal boxes for our medication rooms. It's not enough. Operation Medicine Cabinet, we applaud the Sheriff's Department, but that's not enough. County Behavioral Wellness has worked with Public Health, along with the Advisory Board, as well as the Third District, specifically Aaron Weber, to advocate for more cost-effective drug disposal. Last but not least, as we've said before many times, the availability of unused opioids, oxycodone, vicodin, codeine, morphine, dilaudid, on and on, has been a major source of opioid availability, drug diversion, and opioid abuse. Therefore, we support the passage of the ordinance, and I applaud the Public Health Department for bringing this forward, as well as you. Thank you.
James Joyce, and then Lindsey Baker to follow.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board. James Joyce here on behalf of Senator Hannah Beth Jackson. I'm sure you've received and read through her letter of support for this ordinance. Just to take this time to reiterate that this is an issue that the Senator has tried to combat multiple times at the state level with state legislation in an effort to create a statewide pharmaceutical take-back initiative. That has been unsuccessful at the statewide level, and so therefore, you see yourself in the company of other counties who are also considering and have done such ordinances in the hope that maybe there should be some sort of uniformity across the state as multiple counties consider similar ordinance. And so, the Senator greatly appreciates your consideration of this ordinance and urges your support. Thank you so much.
Lindsey Baker, to be followed by Penny Owens.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. I am Lindsey Baker, Co-President of the League of Women Voters. The League has supported safe and effective hazardous waste management for over thirty years at the state, regional, and local levels. We were early proponents of household hazardous waste disposal programs, from the county's first HHW Collection Day to the Community Hazardous Waste Collection Center at UCSB and other current programs. One of the more difficult problems has been household pharmaceutical waste. The county has begun to meet this need, first with collection days, and more recently by providing drop boxes in sheriff's stations. League has supported this Operation Medicine Cabinet and tried to make our members and others aware of it. The drop boxes have often been filled very quickly, showing that the community truly needs and wants a safe way to dispose of their unused medicines. While we strongly support these efforts, a more comprehensive solution is needed. We have participated as a stakeholder in the public meetings and workshops to find that solution. Last year, we urged your board to draft an ordinance for an Extended Producer Responsibility Safe Drug Disposal Program. Today, we are here to ask you to pass that ordinance. We will continue supporting both the development and implementation of this program, because it is so important, and for both public and the environment. Thank you.
Penny Owens, to be followed by Brad McVeigh, who's our final speaker.
Good afternoon, Chair, Supervisors. Penny Owens with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Channel Keeper is a local nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting water quality and aquatic habitats in the Santa Barbara Channel and its watersheds. We strongly support this Extended Producer Responsibility Ordinance for safe drug disposal in Santa Barbara County. Currently, I'm sure the number's increasing, about eighteen hundred pharmaceuticals are approved for prescription use in the U.S., and when improperly disposed of, as we're often hearing, that grinding in a coffee bag with cat litter, it does sound like quite a lot of work, they're often flushed down the toilets, and that makes our way right to the wastewater treatment facilities and can make its way into the waterways in our ocean, and can cause harm not only to water supplies, but also fish and the environment. This Extended Producer Responsibility Ordinance would not only help provide critical, sustainable funding for safe drug disposable in Santa Barbara County, but would also reduce the amount of drugs being improperly disposed of by creating a more convenient disposal system. A study conducted by the U.S. Geological Survey found measurable amounts of one or more medications in eighty percent of the water samples that they took throughout a network of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine streams in thirty states in the country. Once these compounds are in the water, they can and do have an impact on aquatic life. Hope I'm out of time. We are due to support the ordinance. Thanks for your consideration.
Brad McVeigh.
Good afternoon, Chair Adams, Supervisors. I'm going to be real brief, because I don't want to repeat a whole bunch of things that you already know and have already heard, but I want to express my appreciation for having the opportunity to represent the sheriff today. In fact, I get to represent all law enforcement leaders in the county. A couple of months ago, they had the opportunity to receive a presentation from Supervisor Farr's staff, and during that meeting, every law enforcement leader in the county supported this ordinance. So I wanted to let you know that that did occur. That meeting was chaired by the sheriff, and had, like I said again, every leader in the county there. I wanted to address one thing very quickly that Supervisor Wolf brought up. We talked about the destruction aspect of the drugs. Law enforcement's exempt from the possession of narcotics, obviously due to the nature of our job, so that allows us to physically transport drugs to a destruction facility down in LA area. However, that's a private company that allows us to do that as a public service, and they can withdraw that at any time. So this is currently not a sustainable operation, and I just bring that to your attention. Only a licensed, DOJ-licensed destroyer, or just, I don't want to say it, someone that can destroy the narcotic and transport them, is allowed to possess them or collect them from our local agencies. So again, I want to thank all of you, Supervisor Farr, especially your staff. I have to say, Ms. Weber's been tremendous, and I really appreciate you taking a look at this ordinance.
Supervisor Labanino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Brad, I was kind of floating away on there for a second. I just want to make sure.
You're right. Is that-
So what you're saying is, there are drugs that we wouldn't... I'm hearing something different from like MWS and from you, I think, is you're saying that there are some drugs that we just can't send there.
I'm sorry, through the chair, Supervisor Labanino. Controlled narcotics are the types of drugs that we can't, no one else can possess.
All right.
Only the person it's been issued to, or law enforcement, or a licensed destroyer.
Okay, but even if we pass the ordinance, we're still not going to be able to, I mean, there are, I don't think we're going to go to the producer of the cocaine or, and tell them he's responsible from cradle to grave. So how are we still going to deal with controlled narcotics?
Understand.
Uncontrolled.
Many of the prescribed medications are narcotics. They're controlled, so I use that term loosely, not just to refer to illicit drugs.
Right.
These are controlled substances as well.
Okay. So, but all, just so I'm sure, all legal drugs? Well, I guess it's more a question for the MWS gentlemen, so I'm okay.
Fair enough.
Right, but illegal drugs, you're going to have to deal with them anyway.
That won't change for us.
Right, okay, that doesn't change. So, okay, that's all I need to know. I had another question, too, if that's for a dumb public comment, but not for Brad, for Mr. Fay. So, can we go to your slide on how it works? Because that's where rubber meets the road, I guess. So, why can't we just... The only problem I have with this is the, what are the plans called? The stewardship plans. Because like you said, there's hundreds of manufacturers, hundreds of producers. We'd have to have hundreds of these stewardship plans, and we're following hundreds of, you know, where they are in the process, how often do they get updated, all those kinds of things. It seems pretty cumbersome. Why can't you just have a very simple one, two, three, four, five, where it's, you know, it goes to the pharmacist, collects it, they box it, it gets shipped to whoever to incinerate it, and a bill is either sent to the county, we pass along to the producer, or if the cost is limited, then the county picks it up?
Supervisor Labanino, through the chair. The way the ordinance is written, yes, each producer could write his or own stewardship plan. One element of the ordinance is the stewardship plans need to coordinate so that each producer doesn't have his or her own bin in particular pharmacies. So they essentially, even if they are writing their own plans, the plans have to share resources. Functionally, what has happened in Alameda and Seattle-King County that have already gone down this road is they have resulted each in one plan that all the producers participate in. We had anticipated maybe a couple of plans. King County actually had two plans approved, but one of their plan providers pulled out because it really wasn't cost-effective for them to try to run two plans.
Supervisor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, unless other supervisors have questions, I'd like to go ahead and start off with some comments.
Well, I have a whole bunch, so I don't know if you want to wait for me, or-
You have questions or comments?
Yeah, well, I have questions.
Okay, well, why don't we do questions first?
Okay. Well, first of all, Mr. Fay, do you have any evidence at all of, because there wasn't anything in the board letter about any kind of significant amounts, or any amounts whatsoever in any water source locally at all?
Supervisor Adam. No, I think that when we addressed the Board of Supervisors in, when was our first, in May of 2015, our primary focus is on the abuse and misuse of the drugs that get back into the marketplace. We have not emphasized the environmental impacts. I don't know that we have, at least I have not reviewed data in, specific to this area to know whether we have groundwater or surface water impacts. I know that the kind of data we have seen is more generalized, you know, like we've seen from Puget Sound.
Okay, well, you know, we're really trying to solve a drug abuse problem for an environmental reason, and I think that that's, you know, not that it couldn't be there, I guess arguing though it could be, but I don't have any evidence before me that says it is, and I do have a lot of experience with something called hydrolysis that makes almost everything come apart once it gets inside water, so it's pretty difficult to keep a molecule together, especially long, complex chemicals like drugs, together once it hits water. So I'm, I would be surprised if you could find Advil or acetaminophen or anything like that as a complete drug in any water body, like especially something the size of Puget Sound, let alone any of our groundwater basins or any of that. I've never heard of any sort of finding that there was drugs in our water. Have you?
Supervisor Adam, actually, the report from Puget Sound was that cocktail is actually found in the flesh of the young salmon, and it's also found in shellfish up there. I mean, I don't think there's a lot of question that pharmaceuticals are finding their way into the environment. I don't know specifically the degree to which they found their way into the environment here. The jury is out on the impact of those, the presence of those pharmaceuticals and what harm it may be causing to the aquatic life, but I understand what you're saying, but I think that that's, it's been pretty well documented that it's there. Now, whether it's from the sewage or from drugs having been improperly disposed of, and what proportion of that exists, there could be a lot of argument or discussion about that, but I think the presence is pretty well established.
Did they stop anybody from eating the fish?
Supervisor Adam, it didn't stop me from eating salmon, but the question is whether the salmon will survive.
Well, okay. Well, apparently, they're surviving if they're still there. Anyway, you know, we're, it seems like we're trying to solve a drug abuse problem, and this assumes that people are going to take the drugs out of their medicine cabinet. And, you know, why don't we go after that behavior? That's the behavior you're trying to create, and it's almost like you should make it illegal to have drugs in your medicine cabinet after some point, after their expiration date or something, or after you were supposed to have used them, or something like that, see? I mean, we're kind of going at this thing from a different angle, and I just, I don't like doing that. I just, I think that trying to solve one problem by sort of going at it from a weird angle and making somebody do something, I just, I'm very, very uncomfortable with that, and, you know, I don't think it's going to necessarily cause people to, and maybe it does, maybe it does cause people, because we know that our drop boxes that the sheriff's department do run over, and that's fine, but maybe we should just offer some more opportunities to do that. You know, maybe we should put up some drop boxes in some pharmacies or something and see how that goes, instead of trying to create an ordinance, and it's, you know, it's just more business-unfriendly regulation, it seems to me, and it may have, you know, a double effect here of making it cost more, because if the companies have to jig up a program, they're going to spend money, and it's going to cost them money, so they're going to pass it on in the cost of the drugs, and then we may not end up getting the participation that we want anyway, because the people haven't been motivated to empty out their medicine cabinets necessarily. Maybe they are, but maybe they're not. So, and I'm not sure. Go ahead.
Supervisor Adam, I wasn't sure if you were looking for a comment from me or not.
Well, you looked like you wanted to make one.
I think the point is to, by, a key part of this is the education outreach to the consumers about how to dispose of them properly, but in order to be able to do that, you also have to have the system in place for them to be able to take the stuff from the medicine cabinet- from the medicine cabinet and properly dispose of it. And that's why I think we have the, the requirement for the producers to actually have that collection program in place. I think I understand the point you're making, and I just try to offer that as kind of a counterpoint to that.
Okay, final question is, what, what do we do if a producer says, "I'm not participating"?
Supervisor Adam, we, we have provisions in the ordinance for fining, for enforcement, our normal process of notice of violations, and if they fail to comply, we can issue fines.
Okay, so what if they just say, "Well, okay, fine, I'm not going to issue any Viagra to Santa Barbara County"? Just an example.
That's not a problem for everybody.
I made no admissions.
Supervisor Adam, the only thing I, the only thing I can say is, is that has not been an issue, as I understand it, in either Alameda or King County where they're already implementing. I, I don't know that any manufacturers or producers have dropped out of a market because of the ordinance.
I didn't even hear the answer to that, Larry.
No one dropped out, but because of that.
Okay, well, what if they did? What if it was a cancer drug? I mean, we're, I'm, I'm making light of it, and I shouldn't do that, because it was a pretty important question. What if there's a cancer drug that three people need in Santa Barbara County, and they say, "Look, we're, we're not going to support that drug because you're making it way too expensive to get rid of"?
Supervisor Adam and board members, actually, I said there was one plan in place in both King County and Alameda County, and what I didn't mention is that actually two plans in Alameda County. One plan in Alameda County is a single producer, single drug, single patient plan. They have a very specialized and very unique pharmaceutical product that goes to one person in the county. They submitted a plan to the county that's a mailback program, like we talked about, so when they get their prescription, they get a mailer, if they have anything left over, pop it in the mailer, and it sends back to the destruction site. So, the question is, and, and I don't know that there isn't somebody somewhere who might say, "Fine, I'm packing up my bags and going home", and I guess if we found that it was hard to get critical prescription medications here in Santa Barbara County because of the ordinance, we'd always have the opportunity to come back and revisit and try to figure out how to tweak it and amend it. It just has not been the experience of the folks that have gone down this path so far.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Farr and then Supervisor Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you know, staff has outlined kind of the long history to get us to this point at, at the board, and I really appreciate the board's previous direction on this, and of course, you know, staff's work on it. You know, in, in particular, I want to thank the Lesleys of Public Works, Susan Klein Rothschild, of course, Dr. Wada, Larry Fay, and Brad McVeigh, thank you for, for being here today. He has been a very strong advocate of this from the very beginning, County Council's office, and of course, Erin Weber of, of my staff, who has just worked on this very intensively and passionately. Although it was entirely coincidental, I think it's interesting that we had the, the presentation about methadone earlier in, in our meeting today, and talking about, you know, what we can do so that we can address it holistically. Clearly, you know, one of the ways is to try to create a better environment so that people don't start down the path of opioid dependency to begin with, and that means trying to eliminate the ability for people to access these medications that haven't had them prescribed, and, and, and this is what this is all about. You know, I have to say, although I appreciate the gentleman coming and speaking, I would probably disagree with all the points that he made from the California Life Sciences Group. You know, there's just overwhelming evidence to the contrary. I think it's also important to remember that the pharmaceutical industry in this country is among the most profitable that we have, and when you look at the, the costs of implementing this program, some of the estimates have been done, and it's, you know, probably less than a penny a prescription that, that it might really cost. So that's just, it's so de minimis, I think, for the pharmaceutical industry that, you know, that the cost of the program is in no way prohibitive for them. And I think it's also important to talk about the costs on the other side. You know, what is the cost to our community of not having this kind of a program? Accidental overdose has already been mentioned is, is a tremendous problem. So we have the cost of human life, we have the cost in pain and suffering of, of the families and the friends, and then, of course, the real hard dollar cost that we have been paying out of our general fund to support the sheriff's office in their program that they've had, which has been overwhelmingly successful. The cost to our, our Departments of Public Health, Behavioral Wellness, Environmental Health Services, to provide, to provide services to, to people that need it. There is a, a cost to property owners from the, from the wastewater disposal. The question that you, Chair Adam, asked about that, I remember that the, the previous manager of the Greta Sanitary District, Camila Zuri, who had worked there for many, many years, previously gave testimony talking about the fact that, you know, how difficult it was for wastewater providers to really try to clean up the wastewater before it was discharged because of all these drugs that were in it. So, a, a lot of, lot of costs that we are now paying because of this issue, both in, in loss of human life and pain and suffering, as well as real dollars to the county, and I think that that's why, you know, this issue from the very beginning really has had overwhelming countywide support across the spectrum. As you heard from Brad McVeigh, all of the law enforcement agencies in the county, all the cities are in support of it. All of the community groups that are involved with this issue in any way, including our own county commission, is in supportive of it. The wastewater entities we have letters on are in support of it. So, I think we're in a very good position here in that this ordinance fits in with our already established Extended Producer Responsibility stance, and, and also in a good position because this ordinance that we are not the first to do. So, so the road has already been paved for us by these other entities, particularly Alameda and now San Mateo, so we can, you know, have learned from their experience and be able to just go forward with a program that we can institute right away. So anyway, I'm, I'm very proud that hopefully our county will move forward and, and join those entities that have already done this, and I would like to move all of staff's recommended actions. Thank you. I'll second that.
Supervisor Labanino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'm sure many of us are anticipating tomorrow being the day we get our TVs back from all the election commercials, so we can go back to hearing about Eliquis and Lyrica and Humira and Latuda and Zeljans, Celebrex, Harbony, Chantix, Crestor, Zeralto, those are the ones I was just thinking of off the top of my head.
Well, I agree.
You know, pharmaceutical companies spend about a little over $5 billion a year in advertising, telling the U.S., United States, the citizens of, of this country about all the great pills that they need. And I personally have lived with an eighty-seven-year-old in my house, and I can tell you, I deal with twelve to fifteen drugs every day, making sure she's got her AMs and her PMs, and then prescriptions change, and I end up being this huge, I'm almost like a dealer kind of, I got.
You're Big Pharma.
I, I am, I am Big Pharma. And, and I don't have a problem with, you know, I mean, they make great products, and she's lived a, a lot better life than she would have if she didn't have the drugs. But I look at this and I say, "Okay, so there's only three ways we can get someone to pay for this. Either the consumer has to pay, which, if, if it's choice for somebody, it's too easy. I mean, if you have to pay to go take something back, or you could throw it in the trash, we're going to get zero participation, everybody's just going to chuck it. Or you can get the county to pay, which means the taxpayer, which means everybody that doesn't participate in the program has to pay, and I don't think that's fair either. Or the manufacturer, we say, has to pay, which, as Supervisor Adam stated, is not really the manufacturer, but it actually goes back to the consumer. So really, the consumer is picking up the cost, or will have to pick up the cost, and they won't be able to avoid it, because it's already going to be built into the price of the, of the prescription, which I'm okay with. So, I understand why they just didn't, why this hasn't gotten through in Sacramento. I, I just looked up, and it said that over $5 million in campaign donations were made by pharmaceutical companies in Sacramento just last year alone. So obviously, they've got, you know, they've got a little bit of control, and that's why it's having to come down to the local level. I wish that the, maybe I just don't understand the process that well, but it just seems like they're, it, it seems pretty cumbersome to me, maybe because I don't understand it. It just seems like there's easier ways to do this now that I know that we can just mail these products. And, and maybe as Supervisor Adam said, we could get more collection points at different pharmacies voluntarily, and it would seem like if everybody wants to go return their drugs, that a pharmacy that voluntarily did this would see an increase in traffic and an increase in business, because this is an added service that they would be providing. And then they could just simply package those, mail them off to whoever, and take care of the problem. That seems like it would make sense to me. Anyway, I, last point is, I think the U.S. and New Zealand are the only two countries that allow pharmacy companies to advertise to the consumers still. And it, when I watch these commercials, it just drives me crazy, because it's a, it's a company telling me who knows nothing about what's out there or what's available, that I'm supposed to go tell my doctor that I need something, which makes no sense to me whatsoever. But anyway, like I said, to me, it's either the consumer pays or the county, which is every taxpayer, or the manufacturer who then turns it around to the consumer. So, you know, I think this has to join cell phones, tires, computers, TVs, mattresses, everybody else that you kind of have to pay for. You got to build it into the price that it's difficult to get rid of, and that has to be built into the price of the product. So, I'm not sure if I support the entire ordinance, because, like I said, I'm kind of conflicted about how it's implemented, but I do think, at the end of the day, you know, the manufacturer should pick up the cost.
Chair Adam.
Yes.
I just wanted to understand the motion. I understood Supervisor Farr's motion to be staff's recommendations, and I'm suggesting that at Recommended Action B, that would include, as amended at staff's slide number eight for the language about lawful incentives and lawful payments, which is part of eighteen C hyphen one six A.
Yes, included as you stated it, Mr. Gazani.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Just one quick question.
Supervisor Wolf.
Within the ordinance, Mr. Fay, it's, it looks like the producers submit a plan, and there is the hope that producers will come together and make one plan or two plans. But what I thought was intriguing is that it's not necessarily what you showed up there, where they would be deposited in a bin, and that a producer could have the mail in as, as part of their plan. Is that right?
Supervisor Wolf through the chair. Yes, a, a plan could consist entirely of a mailback program. I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that would not constitute a plan.
And it actually specifies in the ordinance that that is an option, which I think is really good, because I think, you know, from what we've been hearing, and I, I just think this is perhaps human nature, is that convenience factor. And if we can get producers to provide that, I think, I think that's really one of the best ways to go. There's also within, we're also requiring that the producers do an education outreach Plan Two, which I think you've mentioned, but that's also something that they have to do. So I think, you know, there's a lot of these things that are going to have to be worked out, but I think we're on the right path, and, you know, good luck to the director in, in working with all these different producers and, and coming to a coherent plan. And also, I think we're going to have to outreach with, to our cities. We did get a letter from the city of Santa Maria, and hopefully we'll get all the cities on board. But I think this is a good start. Thank you Supervisor Farr for moving this.
You're very welcome. And, and Mr. Chair, I just want to say that, you know, I don't want us to forget that this is our ordinance, and so, you know, in, in moving forward and instituting it, obviously, you know, we'll be learning as we go, and if there are things, you know, that we learn, that we realize that we need to bring the ordinance back and, and we need to tweak it, you know, we have that ability to do that, you know, we have that, that flexibility. But, you know, again, there, these programs are already out there, they contain these different ways of doing it, they're, they're moving forward, so we're, we're not reinventing the wheel, and I think that that's going to really help us be able to roll this program out with the least amount of problems.
All right, so a motion and a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote here.
Ms. Wolf?
Aye.
Ms. Farr?
Aye.
Mr. Labanino?
I'm going to abstain for now.
Mr. Carvajal?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
Unintended consequences are making me vote no.
Passes three ayes, one abstention, and one no.
Adam eight.